Good morning and welcome to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Just one moment out of order. So we're approving the agenda as written?
Oh, as written. I need to pull an item on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Item number fifteen for discussion.
My motion would be to approve the consent agenda minus item fifteen.
Counsel, do we need to reconsider the original?
Technically, yes.
Technically, yes.
Yes. So why don't we, why don't we?
I'll move to withdraw my motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion to withdraw. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Make a motion to adopt the consent. Agenda minus item fifteen, taking it separately for discussion.
New motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Our next item is your general, oh, no, our next item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item, now is your opportunity. Mr. Warner, do you want to speak now or at the end of the meeting?
I have a comment on both.
Okay, this is, this says item number fourteen?
Yeah, I'm at the end.
Okay, so now, now is your opportunity to speak on agenda item number fourteen.
Good morning again. I was just speaking at the prior meeting, didn't even know there was a prior meeting before this eight forty-five agenda eyes meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Brown. And I wasn't sure if agenda item fourteen comments specifically would be when agenda item fourteen would be called, but we're doing it now during the prior public comment, and I will be speaking at the end about other topics. So thank you for calling me, sir. The question on item fourteen simply is, do you always receive notice in that kind of formality of something being posted to your website? Because this item is about something being noticed, you being as a board, being noticed about something being posted to that RTC website? And is that how all things are posted to the website through an official item that you now know it's noticed and posted? Or is that just for this kind of a item? And I really don't know, just like I said at the prior meeting, but for the records of this meeting, this is my very first time in the building. I had to find how to park. I don't know the format of the meetings. My very first time to one of your meetings, and I don't get cable. I don't even know if this is broadcast on cable. So it's an honest question with honest concerns, and I appreciate the consideration of the board of all my questions raised today in all meetings, and thank you so much with all consideration and respect.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Counsel, do we want to respond to that?
Well, I think probably, I'm trying to understand the concern, and I think I do. I think the best response is the agenda team would be happy to meet with Mr. Warner after the meeting today and help him understand how we post things, where they can be found, so that he has a thorough understanding of what will be on each board meeting and how to get it in advance.
Yeah, actually, the question, I appreciate that, and we'll definitely get together, but just the question is just a really kind of a stupid, general question is, do you, I don't know if it's a yes, no. It's, I don't need a long answer. I'm just honestly asking. Do these kind of regular, I can go back to all the posted agendas. I don't want to read through the minutes again. I've read through minutes already prepping for this. Do you have these kind of agenda items for posting something to the website?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Our next item is our General Managers Report. We do have a few items to share with you this month. First, we'd like to share with you our Superstar of the Quarter. This quarter's superstar has been an asset to our Transit Amenities Department. This nominee, when we had an issue with our previous bus shelter maintenance company, who we no longer have a relationship with when they left the market, this employee took it upon themselves to go out and inspect each of our thirty-three hundred bus stops at night on his own time, so that he could identify those shelters which had lighting issues or maintenance issues at night. He found a hundred and seventy-four stops that had issues, and on his own, he was able to repair about a third of them. A third of them means that we were able to take the resources we had in-house, fix those, and saved us at least fifty thousand dollars just being able to do that on our own. For the rest of them, we will need to hire an outdoor, an outside contractor, but certainly taking this initiative and feeling this sense of pride and ownership over our system and our shelters is a really big deal to us. And so I'd like to recognize Mr. Scott Edelbutte and ask him to come down.
Do I stand out there or right here?
Right here.
Oh, wow. Well, first of all, I'd like to say good morning and thank you all for coming today. I'd like to thank Commissioner Brown and the rest of the Commissioners for presenting the awards. I'd like to thank Yahweh, and I'd like to thank my beautiful wife who was able to attend today. That's wife over there. I'd like to thank her for her patience and her support through challenging times, and especially why she's been dealing with a lot of issues. And I would like to say thank you to Ms. Quigley, General Manager Quigley. I've been with the RTC for twenty-one years, and during that time, there's been three General Managers, and I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes for the, for the better. And it started with Jacob Snow, and when he left and turned the keys over to General Manager Quigley, things got a lot better. She's raised, raised the bar, and she's had a lot of expectations and goals for us, and I think everyone here appreciates her drive. And I think she's reached high, and she's touched that glass ceiling. And I think that's great.
You're gonna get a raise.
I've had a lot of ups, I've had a lot of ups, and I've had a lot of downs. And during those down periods, I've stuck with the RTC because I believe in the mission, and I believe in Tina Quigley. And I want to say thank you to all the people that work for her, for standing by me and beside me. And Tina, I'd just like to say thank you for your dedication and everything you've done for the agency, and thank you for allowing me to work for you and for the agency.
Well, Scott, the feeling is mutual. I think we all look to you for the fact that you take such initiative and pride in our organization and our assets is a really big deal, so thank you so much.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to the DGM, MJ Maynard. I've worked for her the last two years. And I don't have the words or the articulation to say how valuable she is to the agency. I know she's very hardworking and probably the hardest working person at the agency with the amount of information that she receives she has to filter through and then make decisions on. And I don't know how she does it, but she does a very good job. And why she's doing that, she always has a kind word for anybody who needs it, and she's always there to have a conversation when she feels it's, it's needed. I have two things to describe MJ. It's her trustworthiness and her commitment to excellence. What she says is golden, and you can take it to the bank, because when you have a meeting with her, you come out crystal clear. Whether, whether you like that or not, it's, it's crystal clear. But MJ, I want to thank you for your support professionally and personally. And the last two years, I've been working with Director Scarborough over there. He's got probably one of the craziest sections in the agency. And we don't get to meet every day or even every week, but when we do, we have honest conversations that are very candid. And Carl, I'd like to say thank you for taking me in and letting me work with you. Two years ago, I started with Jocelyn at the same time, and I can't tell you how refreshing it is to work with somebody who's honest and motivated. And he has great management skills and very good leader, and I'd like to say that when the team is down and the team needs help, he's always willing to put his work clothes and his bags on and get out there and pull some wire. So Jocelyn, thanks for the last two years. It's been great. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the Transit Amenity guys, because these awards here, they belong to you. And I just want to thank you for allowing, allowing me to stand up here and represent you. That team over there is the hardest working team in the agency, and everyone should come down and see how hard they work. Thank you. I'd like to thank individually everybody that's there, Nick Rassavage, Joe Pachusnick, Eric Sharn, John Wampole, Eric Trosdale, John Christopher, Teddy Surbin, Josh King, Big Bill, Heatherington, and last but not least, Amy Trnaski. She's quite a little dynamo. And I would thank you all for letting me speak, and thank you RTC for this award. Thank you. Thanks for the, for the time. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Thanks for the hug.
You're welcome. Anytime. I need hugs every time.
Well, we have another award, but you can go ahead and, and sit. We, our next awardee was not able to be here today. But we're gonna go ahead and recognize him. We would like to recognize a mechanic, our, with Keolis, Mr. Glenn Sharilla, who's not able to be here today, but, oh, but his foreman, Scott Wilcom, who nominated for his recognition, is here today, I'm sorry, Scott, to accept on his behalf. Mr. Sharilla began his maintenance career in the transit industry in nineteen ninety-four. In his twenty-two-year-long career, he served as both the Automotive Service Excellence Master Certified Bus Technician and as a maintenance foreman. Mr. Sharilla is extremely knowledgeable and possesses a unique asset, skill set in regard to our RTC subfleet of buses. His insight and input have been invaluable to his team. Keola says Mr. Sharilla's positive attitude and team-oriented approach make it a pleasure to work with him, and that he's an outstanding employee who exceeds expectations on a daily basis. So we'd like to recognize Mr. Glenn Sharilla, although we've got Scott here to accept the award for him.
On behalf of Mr. Sharilla, I'd like to thank everybody for the recognition. Personally, I've worked with Glenn for, oh, better part of ten years. He is the example of what you'd want a bus technician to be. There is no bus technician school or university, and in twenty-two years, I think he's picked up more knowledge than, or he's forgotten more knowledge than I'll, I'll ever know. But he truly is an exemplary individual, and, you know, he's always has in mind the, the safety of the general public and the riding public in mind, and that is at the top of his priority. And I'm grateful to have him on my crew. Thank you.
Well, we don't have Mayor Littman with us today, but I know that he is excited about the new one eighteen, exit one eighteen in Mesquite. We had the grand opening last month. We're happy to announce that exit one eighteen in Mesquite is officially open for business. It opened just a few short weeks ago. Mayor Alan Littman, city of Mesquite officials, business leaders, and residents celebrated the completion of the much-needed I-15 interchange. Exit one eighteen includes a diamond interchange with a four-lane roadway that provides an exit and entrance in both directions, improving access in and out of the area south of Mesquite. It creates a direct link to the eight-hundred-acre Mesquite Technology and Commerce Center, enhancing big rig delivery and pickup efficiencies, and also reroutes heavy truck traffic. FRI money, or fuel revenue indexing, funded fourteen point seven million dollars of this project and created about a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety jobs. We wish Mayor Littman could be here today to talk about the project, but we know he and his city are excited for what exit one eighteen means for Mesquite and for economic development. Next item, I'm happy to report that the RTC received thirteen point three million dollars in grant money from the Department of Transportation to help fund our green fleet procurement plan, which replaces older vehicles with new compressed natural gas vehicles that are highly reliable, help reduce fuel and maintenance costs, and improve air quality. We were one of only forty recipients across the entire nation who received this competitive Tiger Grant money. This funding will help us continue to pursue our goal of having a nearly one hundred percent green bus fleet. So we say thank you to our delegation in DC, who I know worked very hard in lobbying and helping us justify and win that grant money. Next up, I'm very excited about this item. The RTC is launching, yay, finally, a mobile ticketing smartphone application for our customers. And here to present a live demo of the app, Ride RTC is Scott Mazik, Director of Information Technology at the RTC.
Scott is here. Thank you, Tina. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Scott Mazik, and I'm the Director of Information Technology here at the RTC. During a recent communication survey, we found that seventy percent of our respondents owned mobile smartphones. Of those seventy percent, we found that over fifty percent said that they would purchase mobile ticketing fare through an application. We think based on those numbers that we've got support for a mobile ticketing application here in the Las Vegas Valley for RTC purposes. Ride RTC is a free application that will be available for Android and Apple iOS devices. It will allow users to plan their trip, buy their fare, and find their bus. So this morning, I'd like to take you through a quick trip of Ride RTC with a live demonstration. So we're excited for Ride RTC. It will have the ability to purchase, a customer will have the ability to purchase all types of fixed route fare that we offer. So the customer will be able to purchase our residential full fare, our residential reduced fare, and then our strip and all-access fares through mobile ticketing as well, through Ride RTC application. It's important to note that Ride RTC is not going to take the place of traditional markets. Our TVMs are going to stay in place. Our fare boxes are going to stay in place, and our traditional paper passes are still going to be in use. Ride RTC is simply another option for our passengers to purchase fare, an option that we hope they find convenient and acceptable. We've partnered with a company named Masabi. Masabi is an industry leader in mobile ticketing payments. That reminds me, I better turn mine down, too. Masabi is a, is a leader in the market, not just here in the nation, but also worldwide. This is not bleeding-edge technology. This is proven technology. Some of their customers include New York's MTA bus program, Boston's MBTA, LA's Metro Link. Overseas, they, they do London Tames service as well. So this is a proven technology. We are not the guinea pigs. This is something that is out there in the market, works very good. So with that, I'm going to start our live application demo. The first thing I want to show is how to buy a pass. After downloading the application and a brief registration process, a customer simply will select the buy passes option. You see, I have all access for all types of fare on my, my account. That's why everything is listed. This morning, I'm going to purchase a residential fare and a twenty-four-hour pass. I've also chosen in my account to keep my credit card information stored securely in the application. Makes purchasing and repurchasing passes much easier. So I'm going to select my payment. In my case, this Visa card. Simply input my security code and accept and pay my fare. Within a few seconds, I It's actually, it's actually a dummy card, so it probably won't help you too much. After a few seconds, we see that our transaction was successful. I can click Go to My Passes, and here you will see all the passes that this user has, in this case, me, listed that I've purchased and not yet activated, and some that I have activated for use. I'm going to go back to the main page of the application and select My Passes. This is what a customer will do when they go to board the vehicle. They'll select My Passes, and I've already, I'm going to select the pass that I just purchased, which is this residential twenty-four-hour pass. Follow the instructions on the screen. Just before I board the vehicle, I'm going to click the Activate Pass, and the pass is now an active valid pass ready for boarding. Up on the top of the screen, we see the three colored bars that's increasing and decreasing in brightness. We also see the time that's moving left to right, and the time is live. These are some of the fraud prevention features that we put into the application for the visual validation phase of our, of our project. A future release will have the ability to scan barcodes in real time. We are installing electronic validators on each one of our fixed route vehicles. Along with that, that technology will give us the ability to also provide real-time vehicle location to our customers as well. So we'll have much more up-to-date, second-by-second location for all of our vehicles to provide to our customers. But the neat part about this application here with the barcode is it is a hop-on, present this barcode, much like you would at a movie theater or Sea World or some event. Within a second, the driver will get a visual and an audible alert on the validator that indicates a valid or invalid pass. That is purchasing a fare and activating a fare. The next portion of the application is the ability to find my vehicle and plan my routes. We've partnered with a company named Transit App, who is also a large player in the transit solutions for trip planning worldwide. They've got about sixty locations here in the metropolitan, here in the US, very large company, a very large transit services. They've got about a hundred and twenty-five worldwide. Within the past six weeks, or excuse me, past six months, we've seen about a seventy percent increase in the usage of Transit App. We're up to about twenty-five hundred active users per day, so that's fairly impressive. I'm going to select my bus from the main application, and you can see that blue dot in the center of the map is our current location based off of my GPS on my phone. Down below, you see transit routes that actually service the area I'm at. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to select the CX, and over on the right-hand side, you see the zero, zero minutes. That's the time for departure for that route. So I'm going to select the CX route, and you see right next to the nineteen on the CX route, the little Wi-Fi looking symbol. It's important to note that Transit App is receiving our real-time feed as well. So when you see the, the Wi-Fi antenna symbol next to one of the departure times, that's the real-time departure for that vehicle. I'm going to select the map icon there on the left, and here is a graphic picture of that route. It shows my stop, which is the Bonneville Grand, Grand Central Stop, departs at ten nineteen. Also down below, it shows all the stops on that route. It will also, of course, I picked one that didn't have the vehicle location on it. It will also, if there's a vehicle in sight, it will actually show the status of that vehicle as well, and you will be able to see that vehicle move along the route on that map. Transit App also has the ability to do trip planning, so I'll walk you through planning a trip right now also. I'm going to use my current location, and this morning, I'll pick a route solution to McCarran Airport. Within a few minutes, it gives me options to get from my current location to McCarran Airport. I've chosen to leave now. You can also set to leave at a certain time or arrive by a certain time. We're gonna leave now, and I need to get to the airport. My fourth option down below is the CX and the one oh nine, so I'm going to select that route. It's gonna give me a graphical representation of the beginning point and end point of that route, as well as directions on how to get there. I'm going to leave my office, walk to the stop at Bonneville, and promenade, hop on the CX, take the one oh nine, end up at the airport. That is trip planning through Ride RTC. Training is a, I think, an imperative item to make Ride RTC a success. To date, by the end of this week, excuse me, we'll have done twenty-seven separate training sessions for our nine hundred drivers. We've also got specialized training for our security and fair enforcement staff, our transit ambassadors, frontline RTC staff, our customer service staff as well. By the time we actually get through and do our soft launch this summer, our staff members and our team members will be fully informed, prepared for the launch, and willing to, and able to start accepting passes. Our marketing team also has an aggressive outreach plan to promote Ride RTC. We have a soft launch plan for the summertime, and then a hard launch, media events, presentation events scheduled for the October timeframe. This will give us plenty of time to continue with our focus group testing and identify and resolve any bugs that might arise during that testing time. With a soft launch occurring this summer, we hope that everyone's excited as we are. Ride RTC is going to give the ability for our customers to, to Ride RTC is going to give the ability for our customers to plan, buy, and go with RTC Transit. This is an application and a project that has been in fruition or been in progress for quite some time, and it's a team effort. It's the entire RTC. We've got our transit department, we've got our IT department, we've got our customer service department, our finance department. And before I end my presentation, I'd like to note of one person in particular, Michelle Whitney, who is my right-hand person on this project. Without Michelle in our finance group, this wouldn't be where it is at this time, so... That concludes my presentation. At this time, I can answer any questions, although I noticed that Chairman Brown did not put my three-minute time limit on, so I think I'm about ready to go. Any questions?
Mayor. Thank you.
Outstanding. I mean, she's so wonderful. Two questions, very easy. What about special needs sign-up? Is there, in that process, if I have special needs, is there a place for me to be sure that either the bus has it and that the driver knows I have special needs? That's one. And how about the cybersecurity on my account that I have just purchased, and now I've lost my phone?
Yes. So your first question, reduced fare is available. Reduced fare eligibility, when a customer, when we do our hard launch in our final product, the reduced fare customers will have the ability, when they sign up for the application, to input the reduced fare ID, and that will present them with the reduced fare options. Without that reduced fare ID that does a live look-up back to our databases, they will not get presented that option. As far as the cybersecurity, the application is hosted on Masabi's website, and, excuse me, their servers, and the application is PCI and DSS Level 2 certified, which means it is about as cyber secure as you can get. Same level of security as Amazon Web Services that we would use on their website.
This is a great tool. You know, I many times have taken the bus from the airport to the South Strip Transit Center, and many times you'll have international customers who are trying to figure out the transit system, and many of them are really very familiar with it in their own countries, that they use transit tools and ways to figure out their routes. And I think the route mapping will not only be a wonderful tool and effective for our visitors, but I think it'll start to encourage folks who want to get to a location in our community by using the mapping tool, being able to figure out how to get to Green Valley, or to the Grand Central, like you were trying to get to this morning, sir, when you were talking, that if we could put in that information, we could find out what the best route to get here is, and I think it might increase our ridership, so that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does it take PayPal as well?
At this point, it only takes Visa, MasterCard, excuse me, credit card, debit card.
Okay, but you're working towards that, because a lot of folks don't have credit cards.
We can absolutely look into that. As of right now, that's not in our roadmap, but we will make sure to follow up on that and see what we can...
Okay, and thank you. Long time coming. I remember I was in Boston, the Chair's hometown, years ago, and took a picture for Jacob Snow about what they were doing with regard to the app, so we were here. I'd rather it take time and get it done, so I think it's exciting that you were able to work out the bugs. That was really new on the case. The time certain will help our folks get to work on time, know where they need to jump on and jump off, so I think that's absolutely excellent. And the mayor asked an excellent question about for those that are in the more disabled side of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman.
I'm wondering, what happens, you've got it down in great detail, it's wonderful, on how long it takes for each trip. What happens if I'm going to McCarran Airport, I have to be there at a certain time, and then I figure it all out, and the bus is late? Is there something that tells me the bus is late, as the airlines will tell you, the airplane's late?
Yes, ma'am. So in the Transit App itself, once you select your route, you can actually set up alarms inside of Transit App, so that if a vehicle is late, and it also alert you that this is your stop also. Sometimes we miss our stop and continue on. You can also set up alarms inside Transit App to alert you to a late vehicle, as well as getting off on time as well.
You've taken care of every problem, huh?
We have tried. We've had some good guidance, not just from our board, but from Tina and the management team, and from our riders as well. We've got our focus group, and we listened, and we hope that we have covered as much as we can.
Well, it sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As Scott iterated and I'll reiterate, this is not new, this is, we're working with a company who has been doing this at a national level and also a worldwide level, so there's been a lot of lessons learned, a lot of economies of scale that they've been able to bring to the app as we've formed ours. Thank you, Scott. Well done. And that, yeah, I agree, long time coming, so... That concludes your General Manager's report. Next item is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report.
Thank you, Tina, and I wanted to express our congratulations also to RTC of Southern Nevada. I know that that was a very competitive grant program, and Tina mentioned that there were 40 recipients, but there's only 31 of them were urban-area recipients, so it was even, I think they had nearly 600 applications for these funds. And also wanted to echo her appreciation to our congressional delegation. They do a lot to kind of lobby and promote our applications from Nevada, and we're glad to see that one of the recipients in Nevada did win a substantial amount of money. In the news recently, you probably saw the governor's comments at our Transportation Board meeting earlier this week about the possible stadium location and what are the traffic implications. So NDOT is going to be working with the committee that Tina serves on a technical advisory committee to that, the Southern Nevada Tourism Investment Committee, will have its recommendations. I think the governor extended it to the end of September for that committee to make its recommendations. There's not a lot of time between end of September and the legislative session, so a lot of work to be vetted, and he's directing NDOT to be prepared to kind of dig into some of the details of some of these sites and what may be needed as far as transportation improvements, because typically, a developer's going to look at the site-specific locations and improvements in that vicinity, but it could impact freeway operations or an interchange that's, could be a mile away, for instance. So, yes...
I interrupt. Mr. Chairman, could I just make a statement? The RJ reported inaccurately on Mr. Skanki's comments about Project Neon, so if you would just make some statement to that, I think it would be helpful, because I know that project is totally funded, and there have been some minor changes, but what was reported was an inaccurate comment of Mr. Skanki's.
Yes, I think that what Mr. Skanki was trying to say was that NDOT has some projects either underway or on the books to deliver, and it might benefit, or the department might be more set up to deliver a project that supports a stadium, whereas the stadium site could be in an area where NDOT has to do some more due diligence and look into that. Project Neon definitely is funded, we're underway, under construction. There is a final phase for northbound, but it's, the improvements that are to be done through Project Neon Phase 1 through 4 are going to make some impressive improvements in traffic flow in that area of I-15 and the Spaghetti Bowl interchange.
And if I may, Mr. Mountlebaum, through you, Mr. Chairman, that the Project Neon were Cashman Complex to prevail and be a site, that that project is funded, and those changes, alterations, and improvement are already part of the project. That's not something that's changing, it is in fact in place and would work. It's additional NDOT projects that this was to be directed to, so, you know, shame on the Review Journal again.
Thank you, Mayor, for those clarifications.
Follow-up, Rudy, if I might?
Yes.
Okay, so Phase 1, I remembered that the legislature, the governor appropriated some funding for the initial Phase 1 through some bonding. Tell me where the funding is for 2, 3, and 4?
Phase 2 is a direct result of the fuel revenue, indexing revenue, then it freed up some of the money that the RTC controls to give to the city of Las Vegas for Phase 2. So Phase 2 is primarily the local street improvements that the city of Las Vegas is funding, and Phase 3 and Phase 4 are the NDOT improvements that are funded through bonding, so that...
And has that bond been issued yet?
Yes. We've issued our first half of the bond, about 250...
Million, yeah.
I think it's 280 million. It was for the first two years of that. For the next biennial, we have to put that in our next biennial budget for the remaining half of the project.
That's what I thought. And so it's anticipated to be funded, but until that legislative comes into play, you never know what's going to happen first off, and then we have the ballot.
It's probably very likely that, since we're underway, that they'll support that bonding issue.
Yeah, well, I've been there, seen that. And then you have to rely on the FRI passing, so that you have, the city then has the additional funding for the Phase 2 piece.
And actually, the city funding is in place for their phase.
So it's the current FRI that's actually...
FRI supports many other major improvements in the transportation system in Southern Nevada for going forward.
Okay, so they've allocated through the FRI for that portion of it at this point?
Well, actually, FRI took the place of the federal money, and it freed up the federal money that the city could then use on Neon. So it was, it's intertwined...
It's intertwined.
But had FRI not been in place, the city would have been, had a hard time funding the Phase 2 project with the current funding available.
And then, you know, there's several sites, and I've made it very clear, I don't support any public funding for a stadium. If they want to build it, they can build it. That said, I do think it's responsible for the governor to take a look at the cost impacts, because two of those areas will have huge highway impacts that come in design-wise and so on and so forth, versus the Cashman Field, which actually could be a beautiful redevelopment. It might be the one place that you actually could do economic development that would be successful across the United States. We would be rare in and of that self, but I think that's what Mr. Skanki was really trying to address, is if you're going to look at your money, look at where your money really could go and make a difference, rather than rerouting something on the way south side of town. So I think that's part of what was going on there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Wanted to mention to the board that we reached a milestone on our Phase 1 of the I-11 project with acquisition of properties. It's a long process, sometimes involves lawyers. Sorry, Greg. But we did reach a milestone recently with the settlement of a property known as K&amp;L Dirt LLC. That was the final property that we needed to basically reach a settlement for. So it wasn't a question of, are we getting the property? It was a question of how much do we owe the landowner? And the settlement allows a family-owned business to stay and remain in place. We did some design changes that helped increase the amount of property that remained in place for them to operate their business. They operate a heavy equipment business there and produce heavy equipment and gravel-mining equipment at that site. So it's a somewhat unique type of business, and we're glad that they could remain in place. And just wanted to mention that the final property, we still have some more acquisitions to do on Project Neon, but it's something that, somewhat of a milestone on the I-11 project that I wanted to mention. The Garnet Interchange Design-Build Project for the improvements near the Apex Industrial Center, the, we're doing a two-step process, a request for qualifications first to have a shortlist developed of the design-build teams. Those are due today for the request for qualifications. And then the next step would be to shortlist those and then determine proposals, who's the winner of the RFP, to actually go out there and design and build that project. So that's plugging along. And I wanted to also conclude with good news on a North Las Vegas Boulevard project that's going to put it in some concrete bus lanes and rehabilitate a section from East Carey to Craig, just north of Craig Road. We're going to make a recommendation to the board to approve a $17.3 million contract to Aggreg Industries Southwest Region next month, so that project will be underway as well. And it will be a good improvement, because the pavement's deteriorated in some of the bus lanes now, and it'll really get a good structural pavement out there on North Las Vegas Boulevard. And that concludes the director's comments, and I'm willing to answer any other questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rudy, on the I-11, I've been asked to find out where we're at with regarding to the discussion of going around the backside, and I know it conflicts, and that's why I called Councilwoman March the other day about something with the trail system. Can you speak a little bit more to that? Because while I don't want to impact the trails, I do think the backside actually makes the best sense, and so I'm hoping that we're not, just let me know where that conversation is.
Yes, the Transportation Board this week approved a large traffic study contract with a consultant down here in Las Vegas to, in addition to that eastern corridor for a future I-11, it's studying all the other freeway systems, and it kind of ties into the item that was pulled that I'll get into under that agenda item. But we're studying all the freeways here in Southern Nevada, except for some, an area of 515 that's already been underway on our study, and a section of the north Beltway. So just about every other freeway, except for that little northern piece from 95 to I-15 in the north, and I-15 has already been studied from the Spaghetti Bowl to the 215 interchange approximately, and that little piece of 515 we're excluded. But every, everything else, including that eastern corridor for a future I-11, is going to be studied. And the reason for that is because the, some of the previous studies are a little bit outdated. Things have changed here in Southern Nevada. We want to get the latest and greatest traffic projections, so that we can advance some of these other transportation improvements that are needed down here in Southern Nevada.
Okay, and then maybe, Councilwoman, you could speak a little bit about what the trail issue is? I think Henderson had a concern about that studying part of that. Thank you. And while you're coming down, it's also my understanding that that pocket is, who owns the land right in that section?
The Land Bureau of Land Management is private.
No, private sector?
There's, it depends, we've only identified the area, so making a connection from the Henderson area to North Las Vegas area, we haven't defined a corridor in between yet, but most likely, it could be a combination of federally managed land, privately-owned land, and maybe some locally, local government-owned land.
What I'd not want to see happen is that the corridor be designed so that we actually have to pay the privately-owned land, because then that game's got played politically on that side of it, so I would just caution to be careful on that part. Do you briefly, I apologize, Mr. Sir.
Sure. Excuse me. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Robert Hurd, Director of Public Works, Parks and Recreation for City of Henderson. And the corridor for the eastern alignment, and it is very broad, we've been working with Sandra Rosenberg and NDOT staff on that eastern corridor, but as proposed, we, it would potentially impact our River Mountain Loop Trail on the eastern side of the city. It would have impacts to our rural neighborhoods there on the eastern side, as well as it continues north and connects into Lake Mead Parkway and would pass in between several of our developments, including Lake Las Vegas. And so it is of great concern, as presently drawn, and we look forward to continuing to work with Rudy and NDOT on this traffic study to really kind of flush out the merits of that eastern corridor.
Okay, yeah, and definitely, you need to watch for your neighborhoods. I just would caution that we don't create a fiscal windfall for individuals that may be in that area that are maybe forcing it behind the scenes, that it's an issue, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, your next item is your consent agenda, which is made up of items 5 through 27, although we have agreed to pull item number 15.
Would make a motion to approve, except for item 15, for discussion.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Your first non-consent item then is Agenda Item Number 15, which is to approve Amendment Clark 16-13 to the 2015 to 2019 Transportation Improvement Program.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Well, I asked for this item to be pulled to gain a better understanding of NDOT's plans regarding project number CL 200354 titled "The I-515 NEPA with Funding Programed This Fall for Federal Fiscal Year '17." I'm aware that the State Transportation Board heard a presentation at their meeting this past Monday regarding the Southern Nevada Traffic Study. NDOT is proposing to evaluate the needs of the region's freeway system and to develop an improvement strategy to meet the short-term and long-term transportation needs of the freeway system here in Southern Nevada. The Transportation Board was asked to approve the consultant's contract to initiate this study. In part, the traffic study proposes to develop an updated traffic volumes for the freeway segments in Southern Nevada, and to develop alternative analysis and preliminary designs for select freeway segments in our valley. It also proposes to identify potential corridors for the I-11 and to gauge... valley. It also proposes to identify potential corridors for the I-11 and to gauge the general effect of I-11 on the prospective corridors and to inform the study's assumptions. It seems premature to initiate the NEPA study of the I-515 beginning this fall, while at the same time initiating a valley-wide traffic study of the freeway corridors intended to identify near and long-term improvements, which include the same corridor. We would not want one study to cause a conflict with another study that could predetermine or exclude possible improvements to a specific corridor before we fully vetted all alternatives with the updated valley-wide perspective. Due to the parallel timing of these two projects, I'd like to have some assurances from NDOT that one study will not unduly restrict or influence the outcomes of the other. And also, I just wanted to add a few other comments with regards to the Boulder Highway. The TIP amendment does not identify funds for improvements along the Boulder Highway, and I understand that NDOT, RTC, and local entities are working to develop a scope of work for a comprehensive study of the Boulder Highway using UP/WP funds. I look forward to seeing an update on that proposal at our September meeting. I'm also aware that the same group has worked to identify funding for construction of improvements to the Boulder Highway corridor should fuel revenue indexing be extended this fall. And finally, I'm aware that NDOT has identified pedestrian crossings for improvements at select locations along that corridor and has identified some state funding to install these improvements. I believe NDOT should be evaluating state or federal funding for Boulder Highway improvements to supplement the local funding that needs to be identified. And, you know, I think that, we know that the Boulder Highway is probably one of the most dangerous roads in the state of Nevada and needs to be elevated in priority. So if you wouldn't mind, Rudy, responding to those two issues?
Yes. I'll take Boulder Highway first. As you mentioned, we are going to be teaming up with RTC of Southern Nevada to study that. Study first, and then eventually the capital improvement projects will come out of that. You'll see them before this board in the STIP, because we anticipate that we'll likely use federal funds, and it's a major improvement, much-needed improvement as well. As you mentioned, we've had safety issues, pedestrian safety issues, in particular with Boulder Highway. We are still proceeding with some of those improvements that are spot improvements for pedestrian safety. With respect to the traffic study and the item that, the I-515 NEPA, which was mentioned, which was part of this STIP amendment process, this is actually the portion not associated with I-11. So it is a study that was underway from about midway between Sahara and Charleston on 515 freeway, all the way to Rancho Road on US 95. So we had been studying that separately, and this amendment just clarifies that now we're going into the environmental clearance stage for that short stretch of 515 and that little piece of 95. One of the important aspects of that was a concept that was developed by our engineering firm Jacobs for an additional ramp at City Parkway near downtown Las Vegas. And it's got a lot of folks in that area of downtown Las Vegas excited about additional access, not only to downtown, but Symphony Park. So we would definitely want to proceed into the environmental stage with that. And it's just a clarification and a process that's, we're making it very clear that we're going to be studying the environmental on that short stretch. The traffic study that was, that I had spoken about and that Commissioner March had mentioned is a separate issue, and that traffic study will eventually feed into an environmental study for I-11. But it's going to be at least 18 months before we're at that phase of where it's, you're going to see it before you again for the environmental study for I-11 as a separate item that this board would adopt.
Follow-up on that, and thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that up, because Mary Beth Skow and I are the other end of Boulder Highway, and then it goes into your area. There are issues. Rudy, there's some, what's the projected length of this study that's going to be done?
The, which study?
The one for RTC and.
On Boulder Highway?
On Boulder Highway.
I think that after the initial study from the Unified Planning Work Program, we'll probably identify that. I'm assuming that that's probably a 12-month, is it, Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So we are currently in discussions right now.
Raymond, will you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Raymond Hess, RTC staff. We are currently negotiating a scope of work for looking at Boulder Highway from Charleston to Wagon Wheel, so it's pretty much the full length of it. I think it's around 15 miles. And it's a multimodal safety study that will also be looking at adjacent land uses and things of that nature. And we've been working on the scope with staff from Clark County, City of Henderson, Nevada Department of Transportation, as well as City of Las Vegas. And so that will be amended into the Unified Planning Work Program for a planning study. That will come back to you next month for your approval. That study's probably anticipated to take 12 to 18 months, just because of the complexity of the analysis that will be required. But we hope that that will inform a lot of the suggested improvements, especially related to safety along Boulder Highway.
Well, I had Public Works reduce the speed limit in the section by us, so at least it's 45 going, and that seems to have helped. But the pedestrian things, and I'm very concerned. I don't want to wait 18 months to fix it for people that have to cross Boulder Highway. I mean, we've known it's been a problem forever. I know our Public Works staff have reached out to NDOT. There are some things you can do now, but you don't want to pay for it. So I'm going to say right now, NDOT needs to figure out how to come up with the money and to do some of the pedestrian safety issues that we can do now while we study this issue.
And I could speak to that, Commissioner, that NDOT is working on funding some of those pedestrian safety improvements right now.
That the three spots are the only ones, though, right? Or are you willing to go?
Well, initially, but definitely if there's some other ones, that we're willing to look at that, to fund those right in the immediate term.
Because I think we figured out how it doesn't cost us with NV Energy, because we do have some of the, the line is already not at capacity in most of those areas, so we don't have to worry about waiting on them. So what we need to wait on, unfortunately, is with NDOT, on trying to make sure that we're doing more than just the three spots. Sun Valley, I think, is one spot that we're working on. I forgot the other two. So I just, you know what, it's nice, but, you know, Boulder Highway, I've driven that since 39 years that I've been here, and, you know, I could probably draw a design for you if you want, but. A complete streets design.
We'll put you under contract.
And I understand you have to study it correctly, but let's at least take care of the pedestrian side, because no matter what, you still need safety crossing, the flashing lights, some things along those lines for the timing, even if it's a safe harbor in the middle of the median while they wait for the next time around to be able to cross. There's some things there that we need to take a look at.
What I would recommend, and I'll have our safety staff come to meet with you personally and get some more specifics about some locations that I'm sure that they're probably aware of by looking at some of the statistics, but you might have a lot more information.
Happy to meet, and maybe we can have Mary Beth and Deborah and our staff people, so we're all on the same page at the same time. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
I just have to throw in there, because I do attend Rudy's board meetings, the State Board of Transportation meetings with the governor and his board, and they routinely make it a very strong direction to Rudy and his team that safety and pedestrian amenities are of utmost importance. And so I know when Rudy says that they can commit funds to it, that he is sincere in that. His board is very committed to that, so I hear it regularly.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to add here quickly that I appreciate what NDOT has done as far as the meetings with the neighborhoods, with all the residents. I asked for an additional meeting last night in some areas that had some questions, and your personnel were very well able to answer the questions. And as we got into little things that are important to residents, an eight-foot gate instead of a six-foot gate where there's a lot of transient problems, they made the affirmation that they would follow through and they would be able to get those done. So I just wanted to thank you for the very professional way you've worked with our residents and the time and energy you've put into it, because I know I've been to a lot of meetings and I haven't been to all of them. So thank you very much to NDOT for that.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Your last non-consent item is item number 28, which is to receive a report on Southern Nevada Strong and the progress of implementation by the City of Henderson. And we have with us our Director of Planning, Mr. Raymond Hess, to introduce the item and the speaker.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Raymond Hess, Director of Planning Services. Before we launch into the presentation, I wanted to give you a couple of updates and some announcements that you might find of interest. The first is, I'm very happy to announce that we are fully staffed now for the Southern Nevada Strong team. So we have Mr. Daniel Fazekis as our senior planner. We have Mr. Paul Gully as our management analyst, and Mr. Amir Al-Hadidi is our management support. So the three of them are back there sitting next to Ms. Ray Lethrup, who you, yeah. So you all met Ray last month? And we're very excited about this team. They just bring a wealth of knowledge and experience from both this community as well as other communities, and have already started, we've been working them hard already. They're already doing outreach meetings and thinking about how we're going to track progress on Southern Nevada Strong. So it's a very exciting development for us. The other thing I wanted to mention is we've launched our inaugural quarterly newsletter that went out last month, and hopefully all of you received that. This is going to be one of the mechanisms that we use to keep people informed about some of the progress that's happening on Southern Nevada Strong. So it will often have a highlight from a local partner that's working on Southern Nevada Strong initiatives, as well as maybe some best practices that we find across the country that we think might be applicable down here as well. Another exciting thing that we just finished up was an inventory of where all of our regional partners are on implementation of Southern Nevada Strong. This was done with the help of a consultant that had one-on-one meetings with all of the 13 regional partners. Big old report was produced, and we know exactly, kind of a snapshot in time, kind of a baseline condition for the first year, how many things have been implemented and where we are with that implementation. There was a separate analysis that was done department by department at the RTC. So we have a really detailed list of the things, a lot of the great work that's happening at the RTC as well across all the departments. Another little fun sidebar that we did back in July, so under the direction of General Manager Tina Quigley, we have a focus month every month at the RTC. So whether that's fuel revenue indexing or whatever the case may be, last month in July was Southern Nevada Strong Month, and we had interactive competition among all of the different departments for them to kind of build a simulated city based on the concepts of Southern Nevada Strong. And it was very well received. It really got the dialogue moving within the organization about the concepts of land use, transportation, economic development, all the things that are key to Southern Nevada Strong. The other thing that we did is we updated the indicators dashboard. As many of you know, this is, again, kind of that baseline condition that was developed back in 2014, and set some metrics that we should be tracking. And what we've done is we've gone through and updated those, and we can show the progress that we're making. And we reported that to the Southern Nevada Strong Steering Committee. The last thing I wanted to mention is, I'm very excited to announce that we have our first 2016 summit. This is going to be an annual event that we want to have every year. It's going to be kind of a continuation from the finale event that happened last year when the baton was passed, as many of you may recall, from City of Henderson to the RTC. We want to use this opportunity to bring all of our stakeholders and the public together to really celebrate some of the accomplishments over the past year for Southern Nevada Strong implementation, and then also identify what some priorities might be in the coming year. And so what we're going to do, we're structuring it with a series of success stories partnered between public and private institutions. And then we'll have a keynote who did a TED Talk on happy cities. And so we're very excited about the agenda. It's going to be September 26 at Springs Preserve in the morning, that's a Monday, and hopefully all of you have received the save the date already. So now, it is my pleasure to turn over the mic to Lisa Carrato, who is the Long Range Manager at the City of Henderson, and she's going to highlight some of the great work that's happening at City of Henderson on the implementation of Southern Nevada Strong.
Thank you, Raymond.
And we also have to introduce Lisa as kind of the originator, the founder of the entire concept, and credit her with helping get the grant money to initiate Southern Nevada Strong, and for, to introduce to Southern Nevada our very first federally recognized regional plan. So she's reporting to your staff, but really, this was also the lady who led the entire, did most of the heavy lifting in getting this plan started.
Well, thank you. This is Lisa Carrato, City of Henderson Long Range Planning Manager. That was a very generous introduction by you both. The originator of the idea, I think, is sitting on your dais, Councilwoman March, has been a great advocate and leader. So it's my pleasure to be here to update what the City of Henderson's doing and to be one of your implementing partners. It's a great transition for us, and I'm really grateful to continue to have that support from our council and from all of you. I'll focus in on one of our biggest projects to incorporate and implement the principles of Southern Nevada Strong at the city level, which is through our comprehensive plan update. We've named Henderson Strong. That is to very directly align with Southern Nevada Strong, to connect ourselves to implementation efforts, and to be competitive for implementation funding and technical assistance. And we've already seen the benefits of doing that, too. I'll mention a few of the highlights. We've received some grants and technical assistance awards already. So the focus on our comprehensive plan, all of us, local governments, are required to have a comprehensive plan through NRS. It's one of the most holistic ways to incorporate the principles of Southern Nevada Strong at the local level, and then give us the opportunity to engage our citizens a little bit more and ask them, how can we customize some of these regional priorities for Henderson? We used a similar approach to develop the guide and vision for how we want to see the city grow and develop into the future. It's a 20- to 30-year planning horizon, and we update our comprehensive plans intermittently, five to 10 years. We use a similar approach to outreach as well, making sure that we're getting input from the public. We use professional stakeholders to influence the priorities of the comprehensive plan. We have an advisory committee, and then we, of course, are engaging our planning commission and city council through the process, as well as the staff working group and project team. We are now winding down on our outreach. We had two successful phases of outreach. I'll share a couple of the main themes that we heard that were similar to the outreach through Southern Nevada Strong. We'll be winding down with our last phase of outreach on the draft plan. That will be from September 1st to the 30th on hendersonstrong.org for people to review the draft and provide comment and suggestions before we work on finalizing it this fall and shooting for adoption at the end of the year or early 2017. So, again, we, in terms of how we've incorporated the principles of Southern Nevada Strong, we really have changed the way we do public outreach. The city used a variety of techniques. We used online surveying that you all have also used through some of your more recent projects, and going to events, third-party events, talking to people one-on-one. We also use focus groups again. And what we heard, similar priorities to the regional plan, but City of Henderson residents especially prioritize schools and education. That was their number-one priority regardless of zip code, race, or ethnicity. They're also really interested in and prioritized health and well-being, parks and open space. And we also asked them, which areas in the city were they most concerned about, similar to the opportunity sites in the regional plan? Which areas in Henderson did they think needed the most attention and reinvestment? And they voted for downtown Henderson, the Boulder Highway corridor, and Lake Mead Parkway. So we are using a similar approach there to talking about the broad vision for the community, but also which parts of the community specifically could we work on. So we have a variety of scales. I'm going to highlight just a couple of pieces of the comprehensive plan update process that are very closely tied to the approach that Southern Nevada Strong used in the regional plan, which is to better integrate transportation with land use. This is the kind of stuff that planners and engineers don't always get excited about the same things, but in this version, I'm excited to say that we are both really excited about the changes that we're making. We've also benefited from the RTC's Complete Streets guidance. We had a 2014 study on complete streets, and we've had all these tools and information but hadn't really deployed it in our regulatory process and our policies. We also were evaluated recently by the Star Communities Rating System, and they pointed out that although we're building complete streets projects, we're retrofitting some of our streets, it wasn't an explicit policy on our books. And so the comprehensive plan update process was a chance to say that more directly, that we are prioritizing complete streets, and to implement some of the previous investment that RTC has made in evaluating our streets. So what does that mean? Typically, we would have a land use plan, and then our Public Works, Parks and Rec Department would have their master streets and highways plan. Now, we're connecting them more directly through the Master Transportation Plan Update. And this map shows how we've categorized land uses, and then our street classifications are now more responsive to what's around them. What is the land use? What is the development pattern around them, instead of having two separate things that sometimes don't speak to each other. So we're excited that street design is going to be more responsive to land use now. Some of the other benefits of updating the Master Transportation Plan, it's consolidating our transportation network, so streets, trails, transit, and bike lanes. So streets, trails, transit, and bike lanes are all going to be part of one data set. It allows us to apply complete streets policies holistically and it better integrates transportation and land use, which is one of the key pillars of Southern Nevada Strong. It also provides us more flexibility and the developers more flexibility, too, when they're looking at what types of amenities to plan for streetscapes and such. Another principle that we all learned from Southern Nevada Strong is that we need to think of economic development and what role our land use and transportation plays in economic development. And so we took the opportunity to update our economic development strategy as part of Henderson Strong. That's not typically done or required in a comprehensive plan process, but we learned and worked with the LVGA on their comprehensive economic development strategy through the regional plan and wanted to do a similar thing for Henderson. So we used our stakeholder group to identify and confirm, in some cases, Henderson's target industries and economic development goals and strategies. So now our comprehensive plan not only talks about place types and infrastructure to support economic development, but it also addresses some of those other economic development goals, such as marketing and recruitment efforts, and is more comprehensive. And these are just a list of target industries that the city ended up with. So as I mentioned, the draft will be online for review as of September 1st for public comment. That's hendersonstrong.org. Just a couple more highlights on our implementation efforts. We're really, we have seen a lot of momentum on alignment with the regional plan. We are a recipient of the EPA Brownfields, Brownfields Grant, similar to the Maryland Parkway Brownfields Assessment Grant, where we've positioned that as a redevelopment and revitalization project to evaluate properties along Boulder Highway and select sites that are best positioned for redevelopment and evaluate them for potential environmental contamination and cleanup. We've all, we're also the recipient of an Invest Health Grant. That's a private grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and Reinvestment Fund to analyze one of our older neighborhoods and develop a plan for revitalization that's really directly focused on improving health outcomes. That, of course, was a theme in Southern Nevada Strong on healthy communities that we've embraced and are following through with. We also received a state historic preservation office grant to do a historic preservation plan update and historic code ordinance update. Those are all follow-on initiatives from the regional, since the regional plan has been adopted. We have a few other technical code changes that we're making on parking requirements and alignment with the regional plan, improving our public sector-led outreach and neighborhood notification process. Those are all underway as well. We've also been recognized as a four-star community. That was another implementation action that came out of the SNS process. Lastly, I'll highlight our opportunity site. Boulder Highway, of course, is a major priority for the City of Henderson. We have seen some private development happening there. You'll notice a lot going on if you're visiting our side of Boulder Highway with cadence. The Henderson Hospital is opening in October. The Gateway Project at Boulder and Galleria, that will include senior apartments, assisted living, skilled nursing, medical mixed use, and retail restaurant uses. And then we continue to partner with our other agencies, NDOT, RTC, to improve Boulder Highway, as you've already discussed today. So we're still committed to that opportunity site and that challenge. And it's my pleasure to answer any questions or receive any input. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Councilwoman.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We're just delighted that you've been able to stay with us through the Southern Nevada Strong process and then carry on into the Henderson Strong process. And I think that it was purposeful and we capitalized on the name by actually saying, you know, there was huge benefit and huge opportunity and huge growth that occurred in Southern Nevada and we learned a lot through the Southern Nevada Strong process and we're going to carry that on into Henderson. And I think we saw that not only through a plan that includes economic development and diversification, target industries, housing issues, but look at the numbers of grants and investment that we're already seeing from federal programs, state programs, and the like, to be able to continue to grow and benefit our community. And I would just encourage other communities in Southern Nevada to look at the value that Southern Nevada Strong has already brought to the community and as they're updating their comp plans, to look at attaching to or learning from and taking those best practices. And I know, Raymond, you talked about the dashboard and that each of the 13 partner agencies is updating their results. And so there's a lot that's being done that maybe the community doesn't know. We need to make sure that we're continually sharing with the community the huge benefit that comes from participating with and engaging with Southern Nevada Strong. And I can tell you that Henderson Strong is well on its way and we're looking at things like how we incorporate complete streets into our quality of life for our residents and I think Boulder Highway will certainly benefit from that as our target area as well. So thank you very much, Lisa, for participating today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, your next agenda item is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
This is our second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Diana Berry. Thank you, Chairman Brown and members. Forgive my ignorance, this is the first time I've ever done anything like this. I'm here today because I am a paratransit consumer. And my, and I, oh, let me tell you, I am so appreciative of this service. You do a lot of good for this community in providing it so that we can get around people like myself. But I do have a few issues that I'd like to address. I have concerns about the merit system that you have. Demerit system, whatever you want to call it. I can't remember the exact word, but there have been times where I have not been able to get a ride when I called, so they would have to call me back. And the ride that they call me back is unreasonable in my eyes, making me wait an hour, an hour and a half after I get off work, to have to go to the pharmacy to get medication. And then I get demerits because I missed my ride. Or I get demerits because I've had to call them back the next morning because they call me after eight o'clock at night, so I can't cancel it by six o'clock the day before. I'll ask a coworker. I try to get people to give me rides and I don't want to become a pain to anybody. But unfortunately, you know, you can outweigh that courtesy that people provide you and they don't want, they don't want to give you rides. So I have to wait until I get to work to see if I can get somebody to give me that ride when I get an unreasonable timeframe for a pickup to go home or to go get my medication or whatever. And just this past week, I had a ride scheduled, or they could not give me a ride from work to my pharmacy to home. They could not give me timeframes. So they call me back. I had to wait an hour after I got off work, an hour and a half from pickup to pickup to get medication. This isn't reasonable, so I asked a coworker to take me home. I called them first thing in the morning when they opened the next morning, after I'd spoken to my coworker. I was given six demerits. Six demerits of the 18 that you allow me in 30 days. I ride paratransit every day. I work a 40-hour week, just like everybody else. To me, this is unreasonable. And I just wanted to let you know that I can advocate for myself and there's a lot of people out here that can't. And it's just, it's really upsetting and I really wish you would take a really good look at this point system that you have because it puts people under a lot of stress when you're talking about, oh, I can't do that because I'm going to get, I'm going to get points. Right now, I'm sitting at 17. Six of them were just from this past Wednesday. Another one was when a driver drove up to my house, walked up to the door, knocked on the door, did not wait for anybody to answer, and my husband was coming up the hall, walked straight to the door. All he saw was her back, or his back, whoever it was, going down the driveway, turned around to grab me, and by the time he backed me out the front door, they were driving down the road. We are talking less than 60 seconds. I don't think this is right either. When I called to file a complaint against this, do you know what I was told? Well, Mrs. Berry, you should have been sitting in your wheelchair and ready to walk, roll out the door that second. It took me 10 seconds to get up off the couch and into my chair. My chair sits right in front of me until the minute we're ready to go. So these are some, just a few of the little things that I personally have had to put up with. Last year, between September and December, I called 11 times for a same-day medical transport. I was denied every single time. I was discharged. One of those was a discharge from the hospital after I'd been in the hospital for two days with pneumonia. They could not provide me a ride home. They forced me to ride the city bus. My husband and I were denied a ride for six buses before we were given another one because of my wheelchair. UMC is a very busy place with wheelchairs and the buses do have wheelchair access, but you can only take so many on the bus. And I appreciate the fact that they do. And we do try to ride the regular city bus as much as we can, but we are getting older and my husband's having a little bit of trouble. So I just wanted to let you know that these are some things that do go on on a daily basis. So please look at your merit system and especially your medical transports for the same day for discharges from hospitals. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Berry, for coming down. We will certainly have one of our staff members look into that. Comments are appreciated.
And Mr. Chairman, when they do look into us, could you let us know? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Mr. Warner.
I'm back up here again and it was an unintended consequence that I actually showed up for the 8:30 meeting, that I had no clue it was a blood control meeting. And then this agenda meeting said 8:45. Well, this meeting started exactly, meaning the one we're in right now, exactly 48 minutes late. It started at 9:33 and was adjourned as at 8:45. I appreciate staff during the adjournment to reach out to try to resolve these issues and I, I'm seeing, this is my first time in the building, I have to see through all this again because this is technically a separate meeting. Anybody wants to see the prior things I said, go back to the 8:30 flood control meeting. I went and was speaking at that one as well. I do have a prepared statement that I typed up last night that went through in one draft from things I've been thinking about and praying about for about two weeks. And I have Thursday mornings off, so this was a natural be able to come to meeting for me. Watching the Commissioners, I see that you are very concerned, loving, kind people. And I appreciate that and I'm truly heartbroken that we got off to a wrong start, where I was in the wrong meeting at 8:30, thinking this was going to be an 8:45 thing. But it actually compounds to my items that I told your minute taker, where is she at? That, as a courtesy, so you can type it and get it. Yeah. Exactly a copy of what I'm going to read here. And if I could have that put in the official record, and that's the little ditty on the back page of the final page. I, I'll go ahead and start officially what I was going to originally come here for, now that we got all the other things kind of out, out of the way. Good morning. I am Lauren Charles Warner and are here today as a public citizen, advocate of persons with disabilities and local homeowner and taxpayer. It's a pleasure to be able to address the Regional Transportation Commission here on my morning off and I appreciate the courtesy to address several issues. I have friends who ride the different bus services, including Fixed Route.
Mr. Warner.
And RTC Paratransit.
Mr. Warner, just for, the camera's right here.
Right.
So when you're speaking into the mic, they'll pick you up.
Oh, I'm just trying to not exclude the gallery.
No, they won't.
Okay.
They'll be watching and listening, but it's better to pick up that mic when you're right here.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. I have friends who ride the different bus services, including Fixed Route and RTC Paratransit, and I personally do quite a bit of bicycling also in the area. I notice a lot of the roadwork improvements and appreciate the redoing of Oki and Sahara Boulevards and their restriping and engineering for bike and bus lanes. Truly thank you for such wonderful improvements of safety and the training of your bus operators. I am, however, a bit concerned about the cooperativeness and usability of the RTC Paratransit system and will speak here for those who otherwise might not speak for themselves. I have read over the 2014 Paratransit Guide, 2014-15 Paratransit Guide, and concerned about the practicality of the RTC no-show categorical point demerit system. I understand this is absolutely necessary to avoid abuse of the system and each seems reasonable, but can you please explain a grace policy or appeals process when an RTC rider encounters a rescheduling situation beyond his or her control, such as a pickup time that changes, that then has a ripple effect to another ride linked to the original changed ride? Situations such as a late pickup time, whether it's the driver's fault within the published rules, or a rider rescheduled time using a point? That's a demerit point. Which would affect, let's say, a doctor's appointment or a work schedule window? A late pickup or drop-off that would have a ripple effect on a scheduled timeframe racks up points due to a rescheduled rest of the rides, causing the RTC rider additional stress and hardship, whereas the original fault of the causing delay might not have been their fault at all? Yet they bear the burden in points and the actual delay is in perhaps the doctor's no-show policy or tardy situation at their place of employment? Who would make the prudent and rightful adjustment for these situations and are they a process in a timely manner? There is a missing utility cover in the Northwest Crosswalk at Decatur and Oki Boulevards, which has not been covered in months, even after telling the contractor on the site that it's missing. It's nearest to 7-Eleven and as of right now, it's about this big, right in the sidewalk, and I've got a picture of it because I checked it yesterday because I rode right over it. Item one. On Saturday, June 4th, 2016, at 8:03 PM local time, my original email, Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, request was emailed from my personal email address and I request that be kept private from the public meeting minutes and my contact phone number and my address. That read, "Freedom of Information Act Request, Saturday, June 4th, 2016. Dear RTC Paratransit of Las Vegas, Nevada, this is an FOIA request for the following information. Also, please see attached. Scanned the public records request form per the public records request web page." Number one, minutes from the last two public meetings or workshops. Number one, minutes from the last two public meetings or workshops. Two, agenda for the next public meeting or workshops and dates. Three, specific names of all local, state, and federal funding sources for RTC Paratransit service. I hereby request the following RTC public records be emailed to me at no cost, my email at my Hotmail address. This sending email address reply is acceptable. Sincerely, Lauren Warner." It also included a scanned attachment PDF copy of the RTC public records request form, properly signed and dated, a copy of your request public records webpage, and it was sent, it was sent up, there's a typo there, it was sent up with no undeliverable or mailer return errors, but there was no response whatsoever from staff on this. Two weeks later. Item two. On Saturday, June 18th, 2016, at 8:38 PM local time, my second attempt at contacting the RTC with the proper written request was faxed from a FedEx office location with eight pages total, including a detailed cover sheet summarizing of the request of the original email Freedom of Information Act request, FOIA, that was emailed back on June 4th from my personal email address. It also included the two-page attachments plus the printouts of the email data headers to allow somebody to trace the two-week-old request. And citation of NRS Chapter 239, Public Records in General Law Index, and the United States Government Printing Office, GPO.gov, citation of Title V.
Mr. Warner, I'm going to have to interrupt you just for a moment.
Yes, sir.
And I know that you're a first-timer here.
Yeah.
And you've brought to our attention earlier and now some things that we have to work on as far as communication. But during public comment, we usually limit the speakers to three minutes.
Okay.
Now, being a first-timer, we've given you a grace period, but...
I appreciate that.
How much further do we need to go? Especially since this has been put into the public record.
Well, there's actually maybe just a couple more pages, and considering the fact, Mr. Chairman, that there was copious amounts of time given to other items, I appreciate the extension of this courtesy.
Okay. We're at six minutes. Why don't we say we'll give you three more minutes, and those additional comments you don't get to are part of the public record that you've submitted.
Okay. Just, I'd like to make note that, as fairness and in summary, anybody reading these minutes, I will fast-forward and summarize through the entirety of these minutes, but I expect these completely to be, in their entirety, mentioned. Okay, so I'm going to fast-forward my last three minutes. I'm going to watch that clock. I promise.
Very good.
Bottom line is, is I was never given any FOIA requests until the faxed at a cost of $11.43 from FedEx Kinko's. Now, mind you, I don't have a landline or a fax machine anymore. I have an iPhone, and that's it. I can't send faxes to go 1-702 from any iPhone, because it's an iPhone. There's no plug-in fax machine in my house for the last 10 years. So I have to pay somewhere to have the fax sent to get somebody's attention. Okay, now I'm diverting majorly off these minutes, so... There was staff back-and-forth emails. After the fax was received, I had some staff attention, and I had a couple of reach-out telephone calls that were voicemails left. I had no verbal consultation with any of the staff. I was not able to take those calls. In one of my emails, as the minutes hopefully will reflect, on June 20th, the March-April meetings, meeting minutes were late. The May meeting minutes were almost within their 30 working days requirement. And in summary, watching that clock, screenshot on the last page of my attachment of a June 20th printout of your webpage, on June 20th had mislabeled clickable linked items. The February 11th minutes, where I'd misidentified as the March minutes, was actually the February 11 minutes. The March 10 agenda was on the website, because you had just had the meeting. Agendas, we know about that. The March 10 meeting agenda, the April 14 meeting agenda, and the May 19 meeting agenda were all, of course, on the website. On June 20th, there were no March meeting minutes made available or the April meeting minutes made available. Now, as fairness to staff, I was provided some links after a couple bad DocuSign secure links. I was provided all my minutes, as fairness to staff, but I haven't received a response yet for my request for my refund for my FedEx Kinko's costs to get any of this started. And I did receive a request also, I'm sorry, a response for my funding sources. That came real quick, from fiscal and budget, whoever. That came real quick about the funding sources. So in conclusion, I thank the Chair for entertaining my testimony in its entirety, almost, but I appreciate the time constraints. I'm totally exhausted and worn out and wish to have this reflect the efforts, me, the member of the public, to try to get service and information from your publicly-funded entity. I still have yet to receive a refund of my FedEx office fax costs of $11.43, nor any answer why my original public meeting minutes request Freedom of Information Act email was still, no staff has told me why that was never received. And why are the public meeting minutes made not more accessible? For advocacy and compliance and fairness for persons with disabilities, Lauren Charles Warner. And I respect and appreciate the time that the Commission has provided for this input today, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sincerely.
And for the record, the speaker asked that his email address and phone number be stricken. Counsel, are we okay with that?
Absolutely. It'll be redacted.
Okay. So make sure we redact those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one, this meeting is adjourned.